We heard you, Kate. I think you're good to go.
Yep, sorry, sorry. I was, I was trying to pull up the thing. So it's, are there any public comment? Anything other than what needs to be talked about today? All right, let's say we're good there then. How about the minutes of February 7?
I didn't have any changes.
Okay, I did not either. Did any of the other commissioners have any comments? There's a few changes in here. But nothing. Are we good to vote to approve the minutes as amended? Do I have a motion?
Oh.
You have a second? Shayla's seconding? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank everybody. Or Alex, were you abstaining or?
Yeah, I was not there, so I'll just abstain.
All right.
No idea if they're accurate.
You're just admitting you didn't watch the YouTube video now.
I did, I did watch the recording actually, but I have not compared it to the minutes.
Okay.
I'm not gonna do that. YouTube video can sum up as not enough housing.
Looks like we're up to the housing needs assessment. And so I will leave that to who's going to drive that bus.
I'll, I'll get us started. First off, I'll just say, sorry, Melinda wasn't able to be here tonight to present this. She, she put together this presentation, but I had a family emergency and couldn't be here, so I'll do my best with it. And she and I can look over it later this week and cover any gaps I create.
Well, you conveyed to her that it's a great material. The materials we were presenting were wonderful.
Absolutely, and I appreciate hearing that. She, she worked a lot on it and, and really worked hard to get a whole lot of different information organized in a way that was pretty coherent. And we did get a little bit of useful feedback from the commission on the full-length needs assessment document last time, and we are working on adding those clarifications to it. They're, they're not going to change materially what the needs assessment says or any of the numbers you saw, but, but just know that that's in process. And I guess while I'm talking about process, I'll just remind folks that we're talking about the needs assessment. We're going to talk a little bit about policy tonight. But we're at a funny time of the year where by the time we start talking to the select board about any potential policy changes, it's going to be a different select board than it is right now because we're straddling town meeting. So I'm working with the town manager a little bit on making sure we get in front of a select board to talk generally about potential policy directions coming out of the planning commission. But understand that they're going to be kind of general and a little bit of a check-in with the new select board before we put a lot of work into the nuts and bolts of what a zoning bylaw change and what some of the other things the town might do are going to be. So we have some time as a planning commission to digest this, think about it, work on it. You don't have to give us total direction tonight. I, I worked with Melinda to write a, a new draft growth management chapter that we've linked to on the agenda today. Mostly because that's the easiest way for me to think about this stuff is to just open up the hood and start tinkering with it, not because I think it's perfect or because I think it's exactly what I would recommend the commission adopt. It's just a way to start talking about things. So a couple of things on your agenda. We did link the PowerPoint from last time, just so that you could have that and review it. I'm not going to go back through that unless somebody wants Emily to share up a slide. We're going to go right into the what happens next presentation and I'll talk us through that. Please stop me at any moment. We have this and some draft by law language, but again, you know, wide open agenda until everybody's ready to be done to talk through this. We don't really have anything else on the agenda tonight. So, we'll go ahead and do the part two, if you called it. Great. So, you know, last time we reviewed the needs assessment and we talked about the fact that there is a need for more homes in Williston. There's a need for more homes to keep Williston current with the five-year building homes together. Goals set by the regional planning commission, which, which has another couple of years left in it. There's a need for more homes to approach a better balance with the number of jobs that are in town and in the region. And so this presentation is about, you know, what happens next? What happens as the planning commission thinks about ways to respond to that?
Matt, can I, I have one sort of criticism and one question about the whole thing. And I just realized my criticism falls right on that point. And so can I, is it all right if I say it there? The way it's presented, it sounds as though we should have the same number of houses as the people with jobs in the town. And I just feel like that's not, not, not a goal that we've set and not a goal that I would agree to. I granted, there's a big imbalance that we want to get. The words you just used are more where I am, which is we want to get closer. We want to have a little more housing to go with the number of jobs. But I sort of, the way it comes on those slides, it sounds like we're supposed to balance it. And I feel like that's beyond our goals. And like, maybe other people don't feel that way, but I just wanted to say, say that.
I, I agree. I had the same question about it coming out of the last meeting. And, and it's also a little weird to compare jobs to households.
Yes.
Because lots of people have one job per household, but I think it's this building homes together plan that seems to really have a methodology for a recommended number of housing. And that's kind of where we're targeting, right? Not the number of jobs, but the building homes together plan is sort of where we're starting.
So I think when you go into the needs assessment, there's a lot of different ways to try to understand what sort of housing is needed and how much and how quickly, which is, which is another piece of, of the puzzle here. The 1.5 jobs for every home is a generally accepted ratio where people who work can live reasonably in proximity to where they work. And of course, we all live and work regionally. We don't expect every single person who works in Williston to live in Williston. We don't expect every single person who lives in Williston to work in Williston. The bigger you, the bigger you create that system boundary, the more you start to say, yeah, we really probably do want most people living and working inside of this boundary. So whether you pick the county boundary or the metropolitan statistical area that takes in the Champlain Islands or, or something. You know, you might say, I want 95% in here. And we obviously as a town don't have control over all of that.
And on, on top of that, a lot of people work from home. And so this idea that you should live in the town where you work, you know, I live with two people who work in Virginia, but live in Williston. So I, I, there's a lot of problems to me with the idea of saying there should be a balance.
Yeah, keep in mind that the, the big numbers we're seeing on jobs though are those retail and service jobs, which are physically present jobs here in town. And that when we start to look at the, when we looked at the median wage that's paid in Williston versus the cost of housing in Williston, that disparity becomes a little darker.
Now, that's the important part.
So that number, that 3,449 homes is a, is a, is a big and kind of daunting number. It, it reflects a gap that's been widening in Williston since 1985. And I would just say that some of that is the development pattern of the town. Some of that is that for most of that time, the town has had a really strong policy focus on limiting the number of new homes that are created. And, and a rah rah jobs approach to creating jobs in town. So you go through these town plans and they say, we need to make sure we have jobs. We need more jobs. We need more jobs. But we've got to control that residential growth because more people is more service demand. And that, the picture is really a lot more complicated.
Exactly. Shayla has her hand up for the way.
Go for it, Shayla.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think it's, it is decreasing that gap. And I'm sorry, I'm just now repeating what you were saying, but I think really the, the focus on the types of jobs and the types of housing being so different. That income gap is, is something that I do think we would want to have a goal of lessening at least.
San Francisco is going through the same debate right now in real time. Like, so if you pay attention to their zoning and planning sort of equivalent, they're having this debate very publicly. I guess they made the statement that they added 30 jobs for every unit of housing for 30 years straight. And that's why it's $2 million for a two-bedroom house.
That's why people are flying to their job in San Francisco from Las Vegas.
Yeah. But it is interesting to read that, if anybody's interested in this, okay.
Absolutely. And there's, there's actually some other interesting Bay Area to Vermont comparisons out there that our problems are not quite that big, but they're very similar problems. And it's, there's some really interesting stuff here or another. And if you could just go to the next slide, we might as well flip to the one with the numbers on it. Because it's numbers everybody's seen already. So, you know, one of the things I set out to do in the needs assessment was to say, let's, let's get to some numbers, not because they are the exact numbers, but because they express the order of magnitude. So is it 3,500 homes over 20 years? Is it 1,000 homes over 10 years? Is it something different than that maybe? But there, there is something there and we can go back to the original needs assessment and look at where the other various communities and where the county overall falls on that.
Yeah.
You know, there are going to be some bedroom communities. There are going to be some communities with higher jobs concentrations, but Williston's is, is notable in how far it outlies the other Chittenden County communities.
And I'm just saying, I don't agree with that statement on the left that to reach a healthy homes-to-jobs balance, we need that number. I feel like it's more complex and it has to do with the type of homes, et cetera, et cetera. And so that statement to me is almost a red herring because it's not something that I think we as a planning commission agree that we need that many homes to reach a healthy balance. I think we, a healthy balance, we reach with fewer than that.
Can I ask a question? Um, well, how do you come up with a number? Where would you suggest we get a target from? Or would you agree that we even need a?
I would like to address the imbalance of the type of homes first. That's why, to me, this is about affordable housing or inclusionary zoning. So to me, that's the important part. The number of homes is another issue, but it's not, to me, the issue that we're trying to deal with right now.
Are you going to make me draw a supply and demand curve on the board?
No, and I do understand that if you don't build more homes, then the prices go up. I, I understand the complexity of all that. In answer to your comment, Alex, a lot of thought went into saying we should have 594 more homes. And I would say that's probably, you know, that the people that came up with that number probably thought through a lot of these variables.
Well, they did, although they also said of those 594, actually 594 is just a share based on population proportion out of the overall goal, building homes together 2.0. The other thing CCRBC did in that was they said 25% of them should be affordable, but we don't think that's actually enough. But we just decided to say 25%. So I would say, take it with a grain of salt. These are all very rough numbers. The orders of magnitude are reasonable to be thinking about. And I think.
Maybe we should reformat the presentation to work in quarters of magnitude instead of saying 3,449.
Well, I.
About 3 to 3,500 to 4,000.
I'd like to talk about that because I do think when you bring it to the select board, you know, you're not going to hit one, any one number and say, oh, you know, the, the problem has been addressed. You're going to have targets that are likely going to be very difficult to get to. Because, you know, zoning policy is not the only thing that makes developing affordable homes a challenge. You know, in fact, it, you know, you can make it less of the challenge, but there's a lot of other ones out there. So these, these, I think you're right, Alex. These are, these are falsely precise numbers. But in general, start to give some guidelines. And what we would like to see, and you know, Chapin's comment about is this the right number? Does this number even make sense? That's some of the feedback we want from both the planning commission and the select board. I think the policy recommendations are actually pretty similar regardless of where you land on that.
Yes.
But the monitoring and sort of saying, well, we think if it starts to go like this, we should see progress in affordability. That's where you want to have a number that says, oh, when we see this many more, is this and this getting better or not? And then let's adjust our policies then.
And I think my concern is that when the public sees that number, it's going to start the discussion in a direction that isn't the direction that we're focusing on right now, which is primarily about affordability. And second part of a factor in affordability is availability. But to me, it's not where we're starting and that almost looks like that's where we're starting.
Okay, so let's, let's talk about that a little bit. We can go to the.
We can park that. I just, I just wanted.
No, no, no. I think, I think, I think it's good, good to think about that. And I think understanding that affordability and availability are connected, but they're not the same thing. And, and I want to talk about that a little bit. So, you know, looking, looking through that building homes together goal of 594, what do we think we're going to see by 2025? We're, we're not thinking we're going to see the 594. We think we're going to see maybe 225, about 80% of the goal.
How is 225, how is that 80% of 594? I'm just very confused.
I'm sorry. It's, it's actually of the remaining building homes together target because we're already, we've already done two years into it.
Oh, gotcha.
So, sorry, clarify that. And it's, and it's a little bit of that jobs-to-homes ratio, assuming there's no more jobs being created in Williston, which probably isn't the case.
The 594 target is starting previously. I correct.
Yes, sorry. So it's a, building homes together is a five-year target through the end of 2025.
Yeah, I got that. I thought it was 594 from here to 2025.
You're, you're right. So I could, I could give you that, you know, that, that number would be 380 something or whatever as of today. So, you know, we are, we are seeing progress toward that short-term goal. But much like we saw in the region in the first iteration of building homes together, we're, we're not seeing affordable coming along as 25% of that. That's a lot, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. So let's, let's move on. How do we achieve our, our targets once, once we decide a bit? And I guess I should pause on the 172 a year. This reflects roughly needing that building homes together target.
In 20 years.
And also if you do this for 20 years, you, you see the 3449. And again, in 20 years' time, Williston will probably have also added more jobs. And that's not the number. You can decide if 1.5 is the ratio you want to go for or not. And I think another way to think of that question, Chapin, because I do think it's a good one, is what is the right or best position for Williston to be in vis-à-vis the jobs-homes balance, at least in the rest of the county? In other words, you probably don't want to say, no more jobs. We want all the new jobs to go to Jericho and Underhill because they're under-jobbed. But you might say, you know, probably some of those folks could be living in Williston.
I don't want to spend too long on this, but we're by an interstate exit. And so it, available jobs are easier to get to than job in Jericho. So our ratio should maybe be a little more job-weighted. You know what I'm saying? It's, it's, there's all these factors. And what I worry about is someone looks at that and says, oh, this is what the planning commission wants, 172 units a year. Because it says that's how much is needed.
Yeah.
And so I just, I, I definitely like the emphasis not to be on that jobs-to-housing ratio.
Sure. And, and I think maybe where, where I'm hearing your feedback go would be to look particularly at the, at the retail and service sector and think about trying to align that part of it a little better. Not worrying so much about the higher-paying job that someone's commuting to in Williston.
Right.
Okay, so 172 just happened to be a number that, that closed out building homes together. And we, we know we're probably not going to see that. And if, and if you did it every year for 20 years, you'd, you'd see the 3449. So once we, we, the town decides what those targets are, how do we achieve them? Well, the, the first thing we're pretty sure of is the answer is more than has been built in Williston traditionally. And there are some limits on how much, how many homes are built in Williston that are related to zoning policy, which is, which is our focus right now. And then we're going to talk a little bit more about the affordable side and what needs to be done to complete the picture there. So you can go to the next one, Emily, when you're ready. So make it worthwhile to build homes in Williston and incentivize the desired attributes of housing. So.
The second part.
Yeah, you know, there's nothing in this that says every home is a home and that's just it. And, and whatever you get, you get. Incentivize the stuff you want. So what we're talking about is some, some kind of inclusionary zoning. Everybody's kind of heard that term a bunch, require some number or percentage of affordable homes to be a component of most projects. We said here 10 or more units as an example. Typically, there is a point where projects get so small that it's, it's just not worth it to try to require affordable homes. And it means small projects don't get built. And in the broader housing picture, smaller infill projects can actually be, you know, they can add up to a part of the solution. In the draft I'm showing you tonight, the growth management chapter becomes essentially a two-fork intersection. You can either build an inclusionary zoning project, and we'll have to decide what that might be. Or you can go through growth management. Obviously, inclusionary zoning means you've got to figure out your profits and how to incorporate those affordable units. But it means a faster permitting timeline. It means a more certain permitting timeline because you, you remove the competitiveness and the scoring and the limits and all of that. Incentivize what you want. And if we get a chance to really dive into growth management and how that picture might change for the town over time, I would say that if what you really want is inclusionary projects, it starts to make sense to really encourage everything to take that path and really discourage the growth management path by, by winding that down over time. Remember, growth management has a 10-year horizon, so you could just rip it out from under the bylaw today, but it might create some complexities. You might, you might want to think about something else.
The other thing is to keep growth management in the rural and residential zones and not in the.
We could talk about a geographic element as well. Definitely. Okay. So yeah, you know, you, there were just two other bullets on that prior slide. The idea of having a fee-in-law option for, that you, you would, you would go to growth management and you would pay for the affordable units that you didn't build. This is why we have a housing trust fund. We can talk a little bit about some examples of that in neighboring communities in, in a, another couple of slides. And also that you could, you could be a small project that stayed out of growth management by deciding to meet the affordability requirement, even if you didn't have to. Okay. So when you're thinking about inclusionary zoning and when you're thinking about growth management, think of them as both being brake pedals, you know, underneath the steering wheel of your car. If you're going to have two of them, you, you, you can't stand on both at the same time and, and expect to get anywhere. And you probably only want to use one at a time. And we have some local experience with inclusionary zoning. We're going to talk about, the city of Burlington was really a pioneer in this and has some pretty good lessons learned from it. You want to get affordable units, which means you want people to build projects under your inclusionary zoning provision. If it is rendering projects unprofitable and none of them are built, then the affordables aren't happening either. So if, if inclusionary zoning is going to be one of the ways that you get affordable homes in your, in your town, it needs to be something that people want to use. And, and spend, more importantly, feel that they can, you know, keep the lights on whilst, whilst still using. So some lessons learned from Burlington. And this, this was from a report which is, which is linked in the slide if you, if you go from the website. So this was a 2015 report. They were looking all the way back to 1990, so quarter century of inclusionary zoning in Burlington. And they were looking at almost 2,400 or 2,338 units developed. Some units were in projects that were captured by inclusionary zoning. About 1,700 units were in projects that were subject to that ordinance. And of those 270 affordables created over that quarter century, so about 11 a year across that time. And.
And that was interesting, only 5% bought out or did it off-site.
Yeah, very, very little use of off-site. And I think we can, we can talk a little bit about sort of why that is and how that works. You can make those buyout programs either really easy to do or really hard to do, or really expensive or really inexpensive. But it kind of depends on, on what your, what your goals are. So, yeah, you can go to the next one, Emily. Sorry. So, you know, what they, what they found is they got some affordable units, but they, they, they really didn't keep up with demand for homes or for affordable homes in the city. So the policy was successful at getting a percentage of affordable units, but not at meeting what they felt their needs, needs were. So if, you know, this, this represented a reduction in Burlington's share of the county's population, more, more people living out, arguably in the sprawl beyond the urban boundary of Burlington. 5,000, almost 5,500 people that would have been in Burlington if it had kept proportion of the county across that timeframe. And, and they would have, if they were going to do that, they should have seen another 2,500 housing units built in the city over that time. So not blaming all of that on inclusionary zoning, but over this time period, fewer people as a proportion of the county's population lived in Burlington versus the rest of the county.
One thing, it was really nice to see this data. The thing that I wondered when I first saw it was, well, it's been about 10 years. They've been trying to put something like 14, is it 400 or 1,400 units in the, where the mall was. It's a large number of housing units. And I think it's either 495 or 14.
400 or something.
Okay, so like maybe upwards towards 500. And then UVM has built a whole lot of housing on campus behind the theater of like five years ago. And they're trying to build more on the Trinity campus. And I wondered if you factored those, the projects that have been just laden, laden blade downtown and those things that UVM is doing, it would be a lot more than 2,500 additional housing units last 20 years. So I just, I wondered how much this is. You know, that, how much this is. If we looked at it in five years and there were another 1,000 units, it would look a lot different than it looks right now. And that would be without any change to the current zoning.
Yeah, remember that this was a 2015 study too. So we've, we've gone another, you know, seven years.
Yeah.
But I, what I, what I would say is, I think what, part of what you're identifying is, did the land use standards in Burlington keep up with the demand? In other words, things like building height and density, et cetera. And I think the answer is no, they did not. And the, UVM is trying to get Trinity campus rezoned to allow for building height that would let them build the housing that they feel they need. And, you know, UVM's also gone into the Form-based code district in South Burlington and is building upwards of 600 units there because the need is, you know, it's, it's, I mean, it's a good thing for South Burlington in a lot of ways, but it's oozing out of Burlington again and, and putting those, you know, a little further from campus than they otherwise would be.
But this is sort of suggesting that inclusionary zoning was in some large part a cause of this. It's like, it was a contributor. We don't know whether it contributed 1% or 40%.
I think that's true. Burlington's a hard place to develop for many, many, many reasons. And, and what I would say is inclusionary zoning generally makes it more expensive to develop. And in Burlington's case, that's on top of some other factors that are unique to Burlington that make it more expensive.
Has the Cambridge and project gone forward as fast as expected? Because I expected more housing there by now than has shown up.
It's a good question.
Because to me, that was a really good example of the kind of thing you want, putting more dense stuff on a bus route on, in the city. And they were refurbishing the old orphanage building, which would also have been Vermont College. Which would also have been Vermont College. Burlington College, thank you. So it was, it was a lot of things coming together and the plan was very progressive. And so I was wondering if, if, if it's been held up, what's been holding it up?
I don't, I don't believe it has been really held up. I'd have to look at exactly where they're at, but I think it's been steady, but like everything with interest rates doing what they've done in the last year. A lot of things have slowed down. Yes, you had COVID, interest rates, labor shortage. It affects everything. You can go to the next one, um, because I think we, we just talked about some of this. So the, the bull, the introduction of one more variable becomes an added increment of cost and complexity. And I think that's. Accurate. And I think there is a question about how much more expensive and how much more. Complex. What, what they found though, um, was that although Burlington offered a density bonus. For the inclusion of affordable housing, it didn't seem to offset the added cost that affordable housing imposed on the project. The payment in lieu option was high. It says too high and, and was rarely exercised. They had challenges monitoring to ensure compliance with affordability provisions. And I, and I can tell you from where I sit in, in enforcement role, it is challenging to stay on top of all of this. And the more units we have. That are subject to some kind of restriction, the more challenging. That may be. Um, and also that they had set their threshold to where five unit or greater project was subject to inclusionary zoning. I, I mean. You know, that, that means you're starting at twenty percent. With a five meter project if it's one in five. So since this Burlington has retooled the program somewhat, but. Y- your takeaway is especially when starting with an inclusionary zoning provision. Start with one that you think people will, will use. And I've been thinking about this and talking with Melinda about this a lot and how we might work with you and the select board on this. And I think if you make an inclusionary zoning provision that people use. And after a couple of years, you think, no, I think we could raise, we could increase this requirement and get a few more units out of each of these new projects that comes in. I think that's way better than coming out of the gate with one that no one uses and you don't have any feedback about it. So throughout this, you'll probably see me advising, start, start with something that you think people will, will use. And then if in a couple of years, you think you can increase the requirement, great, go ahead and do that. You'll do that armed with some information that, that you're likely to be successful. Rather than waiting for five years and going, gosh, nobody's built anything. I wonder, I wonder what we need to do. So that's just, just a strategy thing. To think about. Um, this is going to be, next slide is going to be a tough slide to read. Hopefully folks can look at it at home. But these are some examples of inclusionary zoning provisions in some of our neighboring. Communities. So I'll just summarize. It was very helpful. Really, yeah, you know, take a look at this, but really briefly. Most inclusionary zoning provisions tick in at projects of ten or twenty units or more. Most require between ten to fifteen percent of the units be some form of affordable. What kind of affordable, everything from requiring sixty five percent affordable to people making sixty five percent of the area median income in Burlington. Which is a very. Low limit for affordability or rather, um, low income limit. Up to a hundred and twenty percent of area median income for, for sale products. In some of our towns. So sixty five to one twenty, obviously. The, the, the lower the price you require the affordable unit to be. The more the creator of the project needs to try and make that up somewhere else. So it's one of the levers that makes the inclusionary zoning provision more or less difficult for someone to comply with. A lot of communities offset their inclusionary zoning provision by providing some kind of bonus, a parking reduction. Density bonus, waiver of impact fees or permit fees, expedited permitting or prioritized permitting. All, all of those are relatively, relatively popular. Tax abatement in some cases, you know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna charge a property tax for some number of years if you build a project like this. All things that, you know, Williston could consider incorporating. Tax abatement would go beyond zoning, but the, the various bonuses might, might help in some cases, I would say. Our most likely place to create lots of new homes is Taff Corners where we don't have a density limit. So the bonuses might need to be something else, um, and, and a little more nuanced in, in the form based code. Some communities offer the opportunity for someone to, to buy out. To pay in lieu, um, some don't. It tends to be complicated. It's hard to come up with the right number. Ideally, you're having somebody pay you enough money for that affordable unit they're not building. That you can give it to somebody else to subsidize them in creating an affordable unit. Yeah, Alex.
We're looking at a comparison of a bunch of towns very close to us. One of which we just reviewed and said it didn't work. So I don't even know why we're looking at Burlington since it didn't work, except to say that this is a bad example. Are there examples of inclusionary zoning that has worked? In towns our size beyond Chitting County, Vermont, that we could lean on as opposed to comparing ourselves? To these examples where I don't know if any of these were effective.
I'm gonna tell you that when you go out and look for broader studies of inclusionary zoning. Like, you know, peer reviewed academic, big surveys. A lot of people don't think it works very well at all.
Then why are we talking about it? Why is the center of this discussion it, if it doesn't work?
Well, I wouldn't say blanket that it doesn't work. I would say that it works to achieve. Some smaller number of affordable units in situations where the market would not otherwise provide them. Is it the whole solution for affordable housing anywhere? No. Can it be done wrong such that it actually is counterproductive? Yes. And I think that's part of that. Burlington example and lesson. And, and one of those we put on the comparison table is so you can see some of the differences between it. And some of these other communities, but.
Were any of these other communities more successful or at least less unsuccessful than Burlington in your opinion?
That it was longer history.
Yeah, I'd just like to know if they work. I mean.
South Burlington's getting, even though it's very complex.
Well, that's what they're requiring, but it's, it's not been in place for very long and they haven't gotten much of anything yet. There, there is enough desire to develop in South Burlington that I think you will see projects that need this. But, you know, you, you, to your point, Alex. It's. It's really. I guess what I take away from everything I'm reading is it's something that needs to be approached with a lot of nuance and a lot of care. It feels really good to say, we're gonna make those guys, those, we're gonna make those developers do their fair share on this stuff. And, and we're gonna make them include those affordable units. And sometimes you will.
Sure. In a place where demand is enormous, what you just, you do it by eating it. But what I'm saying, we're a tiny little town in Vermont, modern sized town in Vermont, by a better way to put it. We, we have a decent amount of demand, but I'm talking about, you know, San Francisco, right? And there you just add it and force it. The, the profit margins are so high that people will just have to eat it. Here it could be like Burlington, we could create a massive drag. I'll, I'll put this out as a, if you will, give me one second. I'll put this out as a provocative statement only. I would never actually recommend doing something like that. But in small situations, often blunt force is your most effective tool. Because you get a lot of leverage on a small wing. So if we just, let's say, I don't know, uh, got rid of the growth caps entirely, just get rid of it, get rid of growth management. Wouldn't we have a bigger impact on housing affordability with striking one red pen through one section? Then, then this.
I don't think so at all.
No? I mean, we just talked about supply and demand.
I know, by, by restricting the supply, we do raise the average price of a home, but we do, there's a big difference between the average price of a home. Going from five hundred to six hundred thousand. Versus going from five hundred to three hundred thousand.
Five units just went on sale in the last two weeks in Finney Cross. Every one of those units has increased in price by more than seventy percent past price in five years. Like we are, we're not increasing the cost of housing a little bit by restricting supply. We're increasing it dramatically.
Cause that's not, cause, and that's not because our zoning, that's happening all around with, to towns that don't have growth management. That increase in real estate value. There may be some percent of it, that's because of growth management in Williston. But I, I, I kind of was reacting to Alex because you said a massive drag in Burlington. And Burlington to me has been somewhat successful, but not maybe as successful as they want to be. And I, I sent, I did look it up while we were talking. I sent it to Emily. The negotiations that happened about condominiums, there's a building with X number condominiums. It's going to cost X number million dollars. If we sell them all as high priced units, we get this much. If we make twenty of them. Affordable, we only get this much. How do we fill the gap kind of thing? I don't know if you, if you want to look at that, just briefly to show that, what it is, because we could put it in the minutes for us to look at later. But it shows to me the actual workings. That's the Cambrian project there, the, the building in the foreground is that old orphanage. And all those buildings aren't built right now, just some of them are built. But the Champlain Housing Trust, you can see was involved in the negotiation. And you see that begins to place purchase price of thirty condominiums. Of the six point three million sales price, this kind of estimated market value of. Uh, eight point five million, is that what it says? So. They're reducing value to the developer, but they have negotiated it. In this environment of that inclusionary zoning. So to me, this is successful. There is, they put the pressure on, you gotta include units and then they found ways to fund the difference. It may not have been just, hey, the developer has to eat it. Maybe the housing trust is gonna come in and help pay for them. To me, it's, it's. We're not gonna just do one thing and, and fix the problem. To me, we have, we have to do lots of aspects of it. And, and so I actually want to look at the neighboring towns and see what seems to be working and talk to them and say. That, you know, CCRPC is doing a good job of communicating with Melinda. You know, what the towns are feeling about and what are they adjusting, just the way we did form based code based on understanding and deciding what we liked and didn't like. And those towns, I feel like that's where we're at with this.
Um, so I guess as somebody who likes to use evidence based practices whenever humanly possible. And to inform public policy, what, Matt, are there other? Ways to incentivize, encourage, acquire, get, I don't care what it is, affordable housing. Through zoning or through other tools that we as a planning commission have. My, I don't, I am not, I personally am not wedded to inclusionary zoning as a solution. I am wedded to increasing the amount of affordable housing we have in Williston. I don't really care what the policy is. I would like to work. It do think, I mean, I also, I personally, again, on this commission, I'm open to the idea of. What are we doing with growth management, particularly within Tass Corners? Where we now have form based code. And in my mind, it's actually beneficial if we have more housing there. Now that we have a structure that would really support that in, in a way that Willistonians said they want. So I, I do, I mean, I would be interested in considering what that looks like to, to look at for. Look at growth management, at least for that area and whether there's a way to, to. Relieve that so that we can have some market. Forces at work to increase the amount of housing and hopefully bring the prices down. But, you know, I mean, are, what are the other options? I mean, is it to have developers? Put a significant amount of money into a fund and to make a deal with some of the, you know, affordable housing partners or. Other, you know, the families with the. Children with disabilities who are here last meeting, you know, there's other, there's not just the Champlain Housing Trust. There's other organizations and groups that could come in and do some of this other housing that we want to see here. You know, and so instead of doing inclusionary zoning, is it, is it feeding a fund or the, the fund that we already have maybe? Through, you know, some sort of much bigger fee on developers. That's not a hassle, not a headache. It's just money. And sure, it'll be money and it'd be a cost, but it would be a known cost of doing business and they just pay it and move on. And then we have, you know, you would have to manage that fund, but we could manage that fund and work with partners who do. Longer term supportive housing and affordable housing in, in. In the town and maybe even prioritize properties or places for that. To happen. Anyway, I don't, I don't care what the solution is. I'm just curious if, if inclusionary zoning is not evidence based, are there other evidence based models or? Should we just try something slightly less fancy?
I'll, I'll wait and see what Megan has to say before I try to answer any of that. And, and I'd like to respond to.
Thank you. Um, hi, everybody. Thanks for being patient with me. Little daughter birthday party. So a couple of comments quick. Uh, first of all, I actually really do want us to look at the neighboring towns. And while I take Alex's point that. You know, that we should be skeptical and find out more information about. Whether, you know, how successful inclusionary zoning can be. The, the point is that those towns near us are in the same. In the same context on so many different levels. They're in the same housing market, for one thing. They are operating under the same state laws. They are operating in the same job market. And, and really with a lot of the same kinds of constraints that we are even down to. Like how much wetlands they have and, and other kinds of local. You know, characteristics of these places. So. While I understand and certainly support the idea of, of looking more broadly into other locations. With, with that kind of research, then you also bring a whole host of other. Kind of variables or contextual factors that you then have to like try to hold at bay. When comparing to Williston. So, so I actually would put more faith in the local towns. You know, for all the reasons that I mentioned. Um, and I do want to have a chance to chat about that more. I, I also, I really respect Sheila's perspective and I, I have the same question to some degree. I want to know like. How much difference? Oh, so mine is maybe framed a little bit differently. I would like to know how much difference you think. The fact that we currently have growth management makes. So for instance, if we let. You know, we, unlike other towns near us, we have this growth management system which makes. Building in Williston more burdensome, more, more regulatory, regulatory headaches, more hoops to jump through, all those things. So we've already got something that's quite complicated. If we allow people to operate outside of that. If they accept, you know, these minimum number of affordable houses or dwelling units. How much do you, how much weight do you think that would, would carry? Like, is it compelling enough to developers to be able to escape from the growth management system? To lead them to want to develop affordable housing. So that's, that's maybe a question to Matt because he and Emily too, because they probably have the really finely tuned. Sense of that. Yeah. So I know, I'll stop there. I know we've got a lot of thoughts and ideas.
I'll get in line behind that to respond.
I'll, I'll just say this about that question about developers. Those, those who build at scale in Williston are those who have figured out how to navigate. And work within that growth management system and, and understand it. And it's definitely a subset of the development community. Not, not applying any value judgment to that, but it's definitely only certain. Players in the area housing market who are willing to engage with that system. And I think looking at a little bit higher level, there are developers in Vermont. And I think, looking at a little bit higher level, there are developers in Vermont who won't work in Chittenden County. There are developers in Chittenden County who won't work in, uh, Williston or, or maybe South Burlington or Burlington. And there are developers who just won't work in Burlington. Uh, and those are sort of, I think, perceived as the tiers of difficulty of the systems, um, that are out there. But we're the only, we're the only community that has the growth management system, and I think in particular, because anybody who's developing this day and age is going and getting some kind of financing from a bank, when they sit down with someone who's going to write them a construction loan, you know, they have their pro forma, and it's all about, I can build a house for this much money, these are my soft costs, these are my labor and materials costs, et cetera. Oh, and by the way, I need to go enter this eighteen-month system, uh, that the town I want to build in has. And I can have a project that one hundred and twenty percent complies with every single requirement in this zoning. But I might walk away from this thing that happens once a year in March, empty-handed, because somebody else might outscore me. I do think there's a drag to that, and, and I think in placing a value judgment on it, but that there is only a handful of players who are willing to engage in that system means that they're the ones who build most of the new development in town. And a lot of it looks very similar to a lot of the rest of it, as a result. You know, and, and that's, that's not really about whether the homes are affordable or not, but, um, you, you, you are getting a result where, um, what's being built is being built by the same, probably fewer than half dozen, um, major players in town.
And I, I wanted to respond to Sheila more, which is that, um, without inclusionary zoning being one component of getting more affordable housing, um, we don't have a guarantee that it will be distributed around the projects. You wind up getting, uh, affordable housing project that's funded by donations or, um, you know, different organizations. And I don't want this feeling of you have an area of town that is the projects, or even a building that's the project. Um, I want it, I like the idea of keeping the different affordability levels spread out and the sample, um, code that's in the documents that were given does that. It says that even within a project, I think, that the affordable homes have to be distributed within the geographic area that's being developed, to some extent. Um, so I, I just feel like, uh, inclusionary zoning is a component that I want because of wanting large projects to have, um, affordable homes within them and not be exclusively for people who have a lot of money. And I would not like to have projects that are only for affordable, being the primary way we get affordable housing.
Now, I have a follow-up question for you. Do you, do you think that if, if we had inclusionary zoning such that, um, developers could could use that way of getting out of the, uh, growth management, uh, system, excuse me, um. Do you think that would bring other developers into town? Or do you think that they're just already too scared off and they won't ever participate?
I think there are some who probably, you know, most inclusionary zoning looks pretty much like what we've drafted here. Some percentage of the homes in the project need to be affordable at some certain level. Um, our attorney told us, when we showed him the draft covenant for one of our deed restricted projects, he says, yeah, everybody I work for uses this covenant. So there's, there is a greater degree of familiarity with that. Um, I do, I do think that would, would bring in some variety and some competition. Similarly, uh, you know, hearing Chapin talk about inclusion within a project, and you've all been living the reality of a Williston for the last fifteen years, where the bulk of new development has happened in some kind of large master-planned project. Uh, the Finney Crossings and Cottonwood Crossings of the world, or seeing the annex come through permitting, um, or, you know, large residential subdivision in the RCD. And with everything you just did, um, around zoning changes in TAF corners with the form-based code, you're really very likely, between what the code allows for and, uh, the reality of the land and, and development opportunity that's left in that form-based code district, you're going to be seeing a building at a time. One of the things that that code successfully did is you don't need to have twenty or forty acres to come up with a successful and competitive project anymore. Um, and in particular, in our, in our draft, that's why we talked about, you know, units within a building. Because if you're building one building, some of the apartments will be at an affordable rate and some will be at a market rate. And that's kind of the most granular integration, um, you can get. So, you know, the other, the other takeaway from everything we're talking about tonight is, I really do believe that what was done with TAF corners set the stage for a lot of what you're looking at, um, now. And makes it more likely that a greater diversity of different actors might be willing to come into Williston and be interested in meeting its, its high standards for design and open space and its prescriptiveness around the, um, the regulating plan. And, and, yeah, so I've got to have some of my, uh, apartments, uh, be affordable at some level. I, I, I've done that before, I've seen that in other places. We have people building apartment buildings in Williston now, who promised an affordable component as part of the growth management system and, and who are doing it. This just basically takes that affordability component and pulls it out and says, this is so important, that if you're willing to do this, we'll, we'll take you out of the yearly competition and some of those other things that, that we incentivize. And also, it works better on that per-building, um, development, um, regime that we think we're going to see with the new code. Sheila, I don't know if I ever answered your question, but, um, part of it was sort of like, if not inclusionary zoning, then what? And I guess, I, I, I want to say this, so looking at the building homes together goals, they said in five, five thousand units in the county over five years, with one thousand two hundred and fifty of them being some kind of affordable, it's twenty-five percent. Um, so if you look at our inclusionary zoning examples, nobody has been successful requiring twenty-five percent. Only one community has tried, um, and, and what, and what CCRPC says in Building Homes Together is twenty-five percent is probably not enough. So inclusionary zoning, in my mind, even at its most effective, might be half of the solution of getting affordable. The, there are all of these other things that communities will need to do, um, to truly meet that need. And, um, I think there's room to look at inclusionary zoning and to look at doing those other things, uh, at the same time.
Thank you.
Can I add that the, um, the town has really wanted to put the brakes on development for years? And that's why we have growth management. And we saw it when we were looking at TAF corner zoning and when we're looking at the specific plan ideas for the Glazer property, that there are a lot of people in town who want to slow down development. And so, um, we have dealt with that mostly by saying, we're going to focus development in a growth center and keep other areas of the town more, less changed. Um, and, and I think this is saying, and by doing that, we've made the cost of the average home too high for so many people that we want to find a way to. Uh, to me, I don't think the town is going to say, yeah, let's build a whole lot more homes. But I think the town will go along with, let's make more of the homes that are getting built be affordable.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to, um, say, um, that I, I agree with Chapin on that. And, um, you know, I was walking the dog and I don't, I was talking to one of my neighbors that I talk to often, and I, I happened to mention the planning commission, and she said, you're on the commission that approved all this development? I mean, just like, and so I just, I, I, I explained to her and, and, you know, in what we, you know, what we do and all that, but the thing is, is there's a lot of citizens, Williston residents that, you know, are very cautious about the development. She brought up the whole extra classrooms at ABS, we don't have the, the capacity at the school already. So it's just something to keep in mind, the, um, I agree wholeheartedly with Alex and Chapin with respect to the jobs versus the homes. Um, we definitely need more, um, affordable homes. However, to Chapin's point, I don't think, you know, the, the whole housing everywhere in most, you know, is, is just skyrocketed right now. And I don't think there's anything Williston can do that, that will, you know, change that, unfortunately, or anywhere else, for that matter. Um, but I, you know, there's just, I think we need to just keep in mind that, that I don't know how much I'm, you know, comfortable saying that we need to have thirty-five hundred new homes or wha- whatever, um, number you want to pick. Um, we need to move forward, I think that the, um, form-based code is, is a really good start, and, um, hopefully that can, and there's definitely other things we can do, but, um, just want to kind of state those concerns.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, I think Kate probably covered my, the point I was going to make, which is that, I, I don't think we can really park the, the cost of housing in Williston at, at the door of growth management, because, um, it's high everywhere, right? I mean, these are, these are nationwide conditions. Um, we, you know, certainly growth management might, as I think Matt mentioned earlier, you know, might account for a tiny bit. Um, but the, you know, the fact is that we're in a, a local, regional, statewide, national housing crisis. And, um, you know, and so I think that's also important context to recognize that, you know, there are only so many tools that we have to, to either control that or to try to funnel it into things that we see as more desirable. Obviously, form-based code is one of those, um, inclusionary zoning could be another. But also recognizing that, you know, we're, we're in a moment of, um, a lot of growth pressure in terms of, of the market. And so that, that housing shortage means that, um, that any policies that we implement right now are going to have to perform well in the context of rapid economic growth um, in the housing, in housing at least. I don't, I can't speak at the moment to, to jobs, but, um, and, and yet, I think we also need to keep an eye on the, on some point in the future where there is that downturn and where, you know, there, there isn't the pressure of growth in order for us to kind of extract some component of what we want. Um, so I, I do think in all these conversations, it's really helpful if we can keep an eye on kind of these evergreen policies that will, um, that will help us succeed in, you know, uh, in meeting all kinds of town plan goals in all kinds of economies, right? So, um, so I hope that, you know, because there are definitely things that we could do in a sort of high-pressure growth scenario that might not make sense, or might just do nothing at all in a scenario where, uh, we're in a recession, for instance, um, or a down, a downturn like two thousand eight. So anyway, that was just kind of like, you know, recognizing that this is a big picture issue, but also letting that inform all of our decisions, um, to, to really pay attention to the fact that we are under a lot of pressure right now. And that may not exist, you know, for even five years.
Yeah, nothing created more affordable housing than two thousand eight.
Yes, and a very affordable office space.
Right. Thank goodness, I bought my house in twenty, in two thousand eight.
Thank goodness I did, or I never would have.
I know, I would, there's no way I could afford my house anymore.
You know, Megan, I think, um, I've thought a lot about this, and, and in particular about the idea of, you know, wanting to talk about loosening the reins on the growth management system in Williston while maintaining my job and not being run out of town on a rail. Um, because it's, it's a, you know, it's a thirty-plus-year tradition to have the, these numerical limits on the number of homes that are created. And, you know, I think I told my story before going to talk to Heinsberg about growth management. There was a coalition of select board members and planning commission members who wanted to understand what we were doing. And I went through the whole thing and the scoring system and the incentives and everything else, and they said, is this only for residential? And I said, well, yeah, and they said, what about commercial? I said, well, we don't, we don't limit, uh, we don't have a numerical limit on how much commercial development happens in Williston. And they said, huh. And, um, you know, made me think about that. Um, the truth is, Williston manages growth in a whole lot of ways. It manages growth by having high standards for development. It managers for, it manages growth by having impact fees. Um, it manages growth by requiring parks and open spaces and playgrounds to be built along with, um, new residential development. Um, in the form-based code, it, it manages growth by having master-planned the entire center of Williston and saying, new development needs to fit this pattern that individually, no one building will do all of it, but it would come together into something where they, where you've, you know, put green spaces on the official map and, and done those kinds of things. And so one thing to think about, um, that we haven't really approached yet, but it's the same exercise we went through when we talked about growth management reforms five years ago, is what, um, do you wish you were getting or feel like you're getting from the growth management system in Williston that could just be made a requirement, um, of new developments? And I think Ken and I put together a little table five years ago to sort of talk about that. Emily and I have talked about it a bunch, and it's actually, because growth management involves a point-scoring system, it's been a real problem for us, um, because we say, well, this person wants points for, um, paths and trails. Well, they're building the paths and trails that we're requiring on the official map, which means they're merely meeting the bylaw, so we're not supposed to give them any points for paths and trails now. Um, so the town has continued to get more and more articulate about exactly what it wants out of new development. And that's a really good thing, and the town's getting it out of new development. But at the same time, then we're, we're almost penalizing people for doing that and saying, well, now, now we can't give you points for that, because it's not extra anymore. Um, so as folks are thinking about this, and I think Chapin, you brought up, you know, you have one set of design standards in TAF corners that's much, much more exacting than what you might have for a subdivision out in the RCD, where there's a, there's a lot more on the table about how something's going to be laid out and, and what it's going to include and not include. Um, do you want to think about, uh, an inclusionary zoning and growth management chapter in the bylaw that treats those two geographic areas more differently than it treats them, um, today? Do you want to think about, I'm okay with this, but there's a design standard that doesn't exist in that residential district right now, that I really would like to have exist before I'm willing to, um, remove that, that kind of negotiation that happens at the DRV as part of the growth management system? Uh, to, to Kate's point about schools, there are kinds of growth that generate school capacity issues, and there are kinds of, uh, residential growth that, that don't. We know this from last year's demographic report that was prepared for CBSD, that multifamily just produces a tiny fraction of the school-aged children, um, that single family produces. So if you're managing for impact on schools, you, you want to manage the kind of housing, um, that's creating that impact.
It, it's early to have an opinion, but in general, I've been leaning towards, uh, inclusionary zoning being a part of uh, the Growth Center and all of the other kinds of measures, like incentives and stuff, to be town-wide. But the inclusionary zoning piece, um, Kate and I had a side conversation about this. How do you do affordable housing in a suburban development? It's a challenge.
It's very challenging.
And so you might, in fact, by doing, by doing inclusionary zoning there, just stop development or make some of the homes so expensive to. or make some of the homes so expensive to fund the others. So to me, inclusionary zoning is a much better fit in the Growth Center. However, I don't want to abandon the idea of encouraging or helping to subsidize, et cetera, affordable homes in all the zones, but I don't think inclusionary zoning is the right tool in the rural zone. And I think it's a questionable tool in the RZD.
I want to, I want to go back to this idea of whether we can get rid of growth management for our tough corners. I agree with you, Chapin. I think that that's probably what makes sense for inclusionary zoning. But I also, we have now put every requirement we can think of right into this area of the town. And if we add, you know, inclusionary zoning to encourage affordability, I I just, I'm not, I, I don't think we should have growth management for that part of the town. I think, you know, I think it could still really make sense for other areas, and I don't know how that works and if that's possible to to use it for sections. But it sort of does both of what Megan was saying and what Chapin's saying, which is that you, you have inclusionary zoning be a requirement that gets them out of, you know, growth management in the the TAF corners area. I do, I I do hear the Williston people who are frustrated by the amount of development. I I hear that. I don't want to pretend like I'm ignoring that. But I do think a lot of that is coming from the residential zoning areas. It's not necessarily coming from the downtown that's literally right next to the exit. It's, you know, that's not what's causing traffic. That's not what's causing sort of all the stuff that we've heard about that is frustrating citizens and residents. It's not, you know, I think it's pretty different to see that that development happen in that area. And I just, I I hear you, Megan, and and I take the point that this is a national problem, this is a statewide problem. I I definitely see it, I hear it, I know it. And this is where we have power, right, is on this commission and in this town. And I think that we can make it easier to build housing, which is what our community needs right now. And, you know, and and if I think I'm parsing Matt and what folks are saying correctly, inclusionary zoning might not be perfect, but paired with other things that could really help, then let's try that and let's evaluate it as we go along to make sure that it is not, that we're not shooting ourselves in the foot.
Matt, that's what you suggested, I think, right at the beginning, that it's a fork, basically. You can go into growth management or you can go into inclusionary zoning. And I think that almost that fork solves your concern already. Nobody's going to opt to do inclusionary zoning in RZD or the Ag Rural or anywhere like that, because it's not going to make economic sense. So you don't think you have to exclude it. If you exclude it, you, you know, should risk effectively being people going, oh, you're trying to build a ghetto over there, a project over there. I think you make it apply everywhere and see what happens.
Yeah, a little bit about the effectiveness of growth management for a second. So when I, when I was hired here in two thousand eight, Lee Ellis, the planning director at the time, sort of sat me down to explain to me the the bylaw rewrite he had been doing for the last couple of years. And the baseline philosophy was tell the developers what you want. And when they propose to do what you want, give them a permit and and make that as easy as possible to to reward getting what the community says it wants. So in the Ag Rural zoning district, the big ask that we created through interim open space rules in two thousand five and then memorialized in the oh-eight bylaw was that subdivisions of land on parent parcels greater than ten and a half acres had to set aside seventy-five percent of their land area as permanently protected open space. And that has happened for every subdivision uh of that size in Williston since two thousand five. And we have other things we say we want in that district and and we incentivize them through growth management. We do this and we do that. But the big thing the town wanted, it just said it wanted, and it's been getting it. And and all the, all the green on the map behind LA over here is is a result of that. And um I think, I think that when you think about this, sort of the three parts of town, sort of rural, suburban, and TAF corner center, what you want is a very different thing and how you get it can be different um as well. I think the Ag Rural is the best example of asking what you want and getting it. I think TAF corners is the second-best example, and I hope it becomes as good an example as Ag Rural under the new code. RZD has been really a challenge because there's been this tension between, it's a sort of a suburban density, let people design those subdivisions sort of the the way they want, the way they make sense. Let's incentivize this other stuff through growth management. And so I think the outcomes have been quite a bit more variable. In fact, as I was driving uh to this meeting tonight, I thought, you know, when it gets a little lighter out at night, we should really all go meet onsite at Northridge, the newest residential subdivision in town, and walk around and talk about some of its various components and what came from growth management and what came from design standards, et cetera. Because I need to go out and talk and think through it that way instead of just going out to inspect new homes, which is what I've been doing for the last five years. And I think it might be useful to to think about that. Growth management is sort of interconnected with these other asks that the town makes. And there really has been a varying degree of uh difficulty and success in those three parts of town.
I I would like that just because I think that will help me, it really helped me to do the tour of TAF. Getting out and seeing it is helpful.
You know, the, the, talk about challenging to get and administer affordable units. It's been um very challenging um to hold that project to the number of affordable or the type number and and price restriction and and legal mechanism required for the perpetually affordable units in that project. And I can, we we might just do a a special uh site visit-based meeting to talk through some of that because it's, it's pretty interesting.
I think it's also useful to know the context in which growth management was created in the early nineteen nineties and how much has changed in the town. So Matt's been talking about, we have an official map now, we have an open space set-aside requirement in Avro. We have form-based code, we have so many tools in the bylaw, but the context has also changed in that we have a professional police and fire department. Like, the police department used to be tiny in this one room, and emergency services were coming from St. Mike's College. And Williston Central School was not a school district, but one town department where there was a really direct relationship. And all the homes that were being built in town were large, single-family that were generating the school-aged populations. And the whole, you know, economic landscape around growth management that created it has fundamentally changed.
Did you have more slides? Um, there are. I don't think um why don't, why don't we flip back to it for just a second? And I'll just, I'll just give you those. Go to, why don't we go to the next one? Yeah, how much of a difference will it make? Because I think you all have been talking about this for a lot of tonight anyway. So thinking about current rates of construction and what kinds of affordable homes inclusionary zoning might create. This is just a few, a few things to think about. It's, it's not the whole solution to affordability in Williston. It's not a panacea. It is, it is or could be part of the solution. That sort of really deep affordability, really anything below sixty-five percent median income is going to come with somebody who's accessing some subsidies. Or it's going to come from partnerships with Champlain Housing Trust. And there, there's just so many different ways um that can go. One example we're seeing statewide right now in Maine that has a housing connection is a statewide fund for the purchase and rehabilitation of distressed properties. So communities that have a distressed property in their downtown or village center can use this fund to buy that property to remediate environmental or title issues and then make it available. So a developer goes from saying, oh, I I don't want to get involved with that. It's got PCVs in the ground to, hey, that's a, that's a lot in the middle of town I'm willing to buy and and, you know, to do what I want to do with it will be relatively simple. So towns get involved that. I can think of any number of distressed infill-type properties in TAF corners where you kind of look at it and go, well, wouldn't it be great if somebody scooped that up and and redeveloped it? Because it's, it's really, you know, I mean, I get emails about them, but USA, that's, that property's an eyesore. Can't you do something in zoning in a strater? So some things like that, and then we go to the next one. If you get the next, yeah. So this was a quote from the the report um that came out of Burlington. You know, basically, generating local resources is a really nice to say, way to say, raising money from the public.
And the example is our Affordable Housing Fund, right?
What's that?
The example is our Affordable Housing.
Right, you, you, you have a trust fund set up. You have a way to put money in it, which is right now through allocating money from the, from the general fund as part of the operating budget every year. But there are other, there are other funding mechanisms um that that are available to municipalities to do that. And there are these other tools as well, and we've talked a little bit um about this. So we talked a little bit about, I said something about, you know, there are small projects that can create some kind of relatively easy wins. Things like conversion of underutilized commercial space to residential. It's not going to happen all the time or even all that frequently. But if somebody's interested in doing it as a way of rehabbing a a property that's underused, one strategy is to just sort of get out of the way of that and make it a, make it a relatively easy permitting process. Another one that reflects some of what we saw in um Senate Housing Bill drafts is some small project exemption. We said, add three dwellings to any property with a single-family home on it. Somebody, somebody has the physical space, they can meet all the other constraints. This would cover duplex conversions plus. You could have a provision that allowed that without, again, going through growth management. Again, meet all the other, meet all the other standards that we have. They have relatively large front yard setbacks in the residential zoning district. They work pretty well in some places, but um as we are dealing with properties that have significant natural resources that we're trying to keep people away from, keep homes away from, and have a logical street layout and have everything else that's trying to go into a development. Sometimes those, those deeper front yards at fifty or twenty-five feet, depending on the road that we're administering, it's just something somebody's going to mow. And and now we're getting funky or street layouts, we're getting tiny little backyards, we're, we're.
And more than perfect, you surface from longer driveways.
Longer driveways. And and you can actually have a pretty nice neighborhood where the front porches are kind of like a hop, skip, and a jump uh from the sidewalk. So uh for me, I I see that as a relatively easy win unless people really want to legislate deep front yards uh into new subdivisions. And and honestly, some developers are just going to go, I've always given everybody a fifty-foot front yard, and that's what I want to design. And they may lose a few homes out of their, out of their density doing that. But, okay. Categorizing what Champlain Housing uh and others do as something other than residential or making it not subject to density rules. This has kind of happened with our quasi-senior housing stuff. The Williston Place Project in Blair Park is way denser. If that was an apartment building, it could never have been allowed under the zoning. It's relatively just like the other two senior housing buildings down there. But when that was proposed to the DRB, we went in to staff it and said, well, the only way you could ever approve this is if this is some kind of commercial use, because as a, if you call it an apartment building, it 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 doesn't meet the density standards. Um, and the DRB went through uh an interrogation with the applicant. How do you staff this? What services do you provide? And said, okay, we see this as a healthcare and social assistance use, not as um a, a housing use. Because Williston regulates the creation of new residential units so tightly, it's a big giveaway to say, well, what you're doing, we're not going to regulate it like residential. So you could, you could look at that, you could expand that to some of these other things.
Does, does Whitney Hill fall into that category in a smaller way?
It certainly would under, under what I'm saying here. I don't think it was treated that way when it was approved. And and there's a.
Is that the, is that the best way to do that? Or is there a better way to do that that just says if this involves any kind of, I don't know what the right word is? Support, you know, supportive.
The way I wrote it in the draft bylaw, and I'll have to see if it, if it survived all of our various edits and track changes, was I just said it's not subject to growth management or inclusionary zoning provisions. I don't, I didn't write any density exemptions into into this draft, Chapter eleven, because it's not where those live. We would have to go into a different chapter to do that. But you could just create it as a use category. You could say this, this is something we're trying to make, make it very easy for someone to do. The state of Vermont does this. Group, group homes that serve six or fewer residents are required to be treated just like you treat a single-family home in Vermont. So occasionally, somebody comes in and they say, I'm going to take this single-family home. I'm going to turn it into a a supportive group home serving six or fewer people. And we say, you know, here's your permit, essentially, because state law says that that needs to be treated just like a single-family home. So there are ways of looking in your zoning app, like what does the town currently make really, really easy? Are there other things that we would like to just say, get treated that way in in service of hopefully having more of them? Megan's hands.
Yeah, um, could you go back to slide thirteen for a moment? I'm interested in the the AMI piece because uh, you know, that's a, that's a pretty heavy lift to get to fifty to eighty percent AMI. Is, what about like eighty to a hundred percent? Or is, or is that like not considered inclusionary enough?
So it's more feasible. One thing we talked about, and it's sort of in this draft I created, was to use the state's definition um in statute of what is an affordable housing development. And when, when the state of Vermont defines an affordable housing development, they define it as a development where twenty percent of the homes will be affordable at a hundred and twenty percent AMI if they are for sale or at eighty percent AMI if they are for rent. And and how the legislature arrived at exactly that, I couldn't tell you. But then if you are definitionally proposing an affordable housing development in Vermont law, you get some benefits in terms of the relative ease of your act two fifty review and a few other things. So um my, my, my point of that is it might be a different number for ownership versus rental in terms of the relative feasibility of that number. I know, uh, talking to one uh entity who was looking at um a TAF corners form-based code area apartment building, we went over some of the affordability stuff in um the growth management system right now. And looking at um creating apartments that are affordable at a hundred percent AMI, it was, it was a pretty easy number to hit. The, the person looked at that number to, well, that's probably most of what I'd be building anyway. And I thought, well, how about, how about some eighties? You know, instead of the two thousand dollar a month, one-bedroom apartment, it's the sixteen hundred dollar a month one-bedroom apartment, which is about where eighty um hits right now for Williston.
And that's because our AMI is so high.
Yeah, and that's, that's the median income for the Burlington, South Burlington metropolitan statistical area. So it's basically the the collecting area of the the greater Burlington employment area, and it's high.
Yeah. Okay, so, yeah, I mean, how does that? I guess, what could we do that, that might?
We have to subsidize.
I won't, no, 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 my question is, like, looking at this slide, it says IZ will not increase the supply of below fifty percent AMI affordable housing. Well, yeah, I mean, that is a really, really big stretch. That requires like something way more than inclusionary zoning, right? I mean, that, that's like serious subsidizing and and, you know, involvement of CHT or other entities. And so I guess my, my. And so I guess my my question is, can we do this analysis? But looking at like between eighty and a hundred percent AMI? Like what would?
Too is saying like, it's not gonna increase the low end, but in the median end, it's also not gonna get as more than twelve units a year. So even in the mid.
Well, that's my question is what, when it says the second line to produce more than twelve. Unlike they to produce more than twelve per year, at what level is that talking? Or or was that referring to?
That's, that's referring to. Whatever level Williston's as yet adopted inclusionary zoning would require. And the reason it's twelve is because it's fifteen percent of eighty units. So we were just looking at, you know, one of, one of the takeaways is if you say. I I want a hundred units of affordable housing right now, and I'm going to get them by requiring fifteen percent of all units. To be affordable, well, gosh, I need, I need hundreds and hundreds of units to develop to make that happen. So we're trying to keep it realistic in terms of what is going to be palatable to the town. In terms of, you know, rate of construction of new homes. And I think a lot of that has to do more with quality and design and location and all those other things we've been talking about, but. Fundamentally, if you need a hundred and fifty affordable units, but you're not ready to build a total of a. Thousand units, you're not going to get a hundred and fifty units through inclusionary zone.
I just wonder if there, it needs to be paired with. I know I'm gonna say fee again, and I read, that's a dirty word, but like a fee or or some sort of. Price that is not, that's just the fee that just goes into the fund.
And 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 I think you could do some of that. I think the other thing to think about, and we can, we can try to pull some numbers on this, because it's how a lot of communities do payment and lieu is. What's the amount of dollars that's necessary to take what would be a market rate unit? And turn it into an affordable unit at various levels of affordability? So in other words, if you're designing such a fee. How many market rate units are you hoping to turn into affordable units and at what level? And then how much does that fee need to be and have you, you know, can you do that?
Yeah, that's why I gotta do the math is what you're saying. Even this, the Seattle example is sort of hilarious, but in Seattle, affordability has just gotten worse. My five hundred thousand dollar house in Seattle is now a two point seven five million dollar house. I sold five hundred grand when I left. And so it hasn't done anything. Can we afford, like, if we tax every housing unit in Williston, let's say a thousand dollars a year? What would that generate, right? Like, this is a big number, a thousand dollars a year, huge number to the average house compared to Seattle here. What's it generate, you know? At a hundred bucks a year, it basically allows us to build two affordable housing units a year. And a hundred and twenty-two dollars a year for every tax figure in Williston, which I guarantee would have a few of us out in the street being chased by a mob. We'd get two units a year. This is why I'm saying like.
I'm not, I don't think we should do it as a tax, I'm saying we should levy the fee on the development.
So let's just say that we were developing a hundred and seventy-five new units a year, which is the target of the total housing. What kind of fee would you have to put on those units to afford to build just one? New affordable unit or ten affordable units or or fifteen percent affordable units, right? So my point is just, we don't.
I think you would, you would have to be doing it with like the Champlain Housing, like you can't do it alone. You would have to be taking that money and using it for local match to state match to whatever match. It would not have, you could not do it alone that way. But I'm just saying, it's not gonna, I don't think inclusionary zoning by itself, from what I'm seeing, is gonna generate the number of affordable units we need. And the only other way that I know or have heard you can do that is is through working with the housing providers to to make that happen. And I think to do that, we have to incentivize that somehow, and the only way to do that is get money to do it. And I, you know, so I don't, I'm, I hear you, but I don't, I don't think. That, you know, and I don't want to create, you know, areas of town that are only affordable housing. However, this example that's right on the slide of the Zephyr Place is awesome. You know, it's really cool, and that is dense affordable housing, right? And and I don't think that's a negative thing. You don't want to build twelve other big units of of affordable housing right there around it. But I don't, I don't think that it, I don't think it's realistic logistically. To say that all of our affordable housing can be like equally perfectly dispersed through our community. I just don't think that that's possible.
Emily, could you show that bar graph I sent you? I just wanna, I wanna throw one more number at everybody, and sorry, Megan, I didn't see your hand was up.
That's okay, I can, I can just say this quickly, which is that. I really do want to make sure that we are. Identifying possibilities in the RZD because. You know, that is where the infrastructure is. That's where we already have water and sewer. That's where we already have proximity to. You know, the job centers of town and the schools and those kinds of things, so. You know, I know, obviously, we can talk a lot about the growth center, but. But I also feel like the RZD is is really a place where we should be thinking about. You know, okay, it might be trickier for inclusionary zoning, but what other kinds of tools could we, could we launch? In a way that we haven't yet, because it hasn't, like, not much has moved, right? Even though we did make some tweaks years ago. Anyway, so I just wanted to put the RZD back on the table, like, make sure that we're paying attention to that, because that is an area that. Could could grow quite a lot. And it's, that's kind of in the intention with its its infrastructure provision and its current zoning. You know, a, you know, subdivision from. The Glazer property aside, like, there, there could be a lot more strategies for infill and all kinds of other things that. That I do think we need to keep in mind.
Yeah, so, you know, one, one thing on that, Megan, before I talk about this graph, but. It's one of those things that the legislature has kind of taken aim at during this session. In the Senate Omnibus Housing Bill, there would be a provision that would say anywhere that's served by water and sewer in any community in Vermont. Must allow a minimum density of four dwelling units per acre. We we do have a lot of areas in Chittenden County that are served by water and sewer where the, where the maximum allowed density. Is quite a bit less than that. In in Williston, our RZD allows three units per acre after you take all the constrained land away, not, you know, gross acreage, so.
And how about Village?
Well, Village is another, another place we're looking at reforms. And if Village was a lot bigger, I I would physically bigger, I would think there'd be more potential there. And I don't, I don't know that that zoning preemption coming from the state has much of a chance of passage. Because it's, it's a big deal, and there's a lot of yelling and screaming about it. But but that's the state legislature kind of looking at the communities that do have the. I don't know, one to five percent of the land area of Vermont that has water and sewer and saying, hey, these are the, these are places for housing. But a lot of those communities are saying, well, that's our, that's our medium density residential, our low density suburban zone. That's out of character with what we wanted to do with it. So stay tuned, the the housing bill is gonna be a wild ride once the Senate draft's actually introduced. Anyway, I just wanted to put this up. Pulling permit data and looking, we do a quarterly report for the select board, so this is just from the most recent one. And what we're, what we're comparing here is number of dwellings created in town. By quarter against the average of the five prior quarters, so. Average of the quarters of the prior period, that's right. So, you know, there's a little bit of a cycle there. Obviously, we're getting down to where there's, there's a lot of noise because it's it's such a small number. But this is, this is typically what we've been seeing. So fiscal eighteen through twenty-two covers probably the last. Two years of build out at Finney Crossing. And the commencement of building of Cottonwood Crossing, as well as Northridge. And units in a handful of other small subdivisions. And it also covers, obviously, FY nineteen, twenty COVID year for whatever that did. But honestly, the ten year averages don't look a whole lot different than than this. This is, this is about what Williston sees. And I think, I think to that point. In a town of, you know, ten thousand one hundred people and growing. These numbers should be looked at in in scale with that. This, this would be a lot of new homes year after year after year in Charlotte. In in Williston in particular, with the, with the way that they're being mostly built in Taff Corners. Was it seventy-six percent of new dwellings in the last five years were in Taff Corners, Growth Center? So overwhelmingly, the new, the new unit count is happening in the Growth Center. But this is just something for the commission numbers to to file away and think about in scale of, you know, this is what we're seeing now. What would something a little more than this look like? And. You know, when you're thinking about the costs of new residential growth to the town. In terms of municipal budget, forty-five percent of your municipal budget is the provision of emergency services. And actually, the, the, one of the biggest demands on emergency services right now is that low service senior housing. That's gone through this sort of loophole and not been considered residential. Because it's, it's got a concierge at the front desk, but no medical professionals on staff. Which means whenever somebody falls and hits the button, they just dial nine one one. Really important part of the housing picture, really great piece of housing diversity in Williston. Really high demand for services, not controlled by growth management at all. So when you're thinking about the degree of fineness with which you can control all of this. There's things like that 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 just kind of happened by categorization of a use type that kind of, kind of monkey with it a little bit.
They're also not contributing to the school, school counts, though.
They are not. And 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 where, you know, where you're really seeing, so I, I don't know if folks saw the CDSD budget and the varying degrees of increase. That the various towns in the district are going to experience. Obviously, where you really get hit on schools is when you have to build or expand a facility. And there's some kind of bond for that. And if you're in Burlington, if you're in South Burlington like me, probably if you're in Williston eventually. Whether it's, it's an upgrade of an existing facility or something that creates capacity, you're gonna see school bonds.
And interestingly, if it, if we do add, it's gonna be at the district level, but it's bonded. It's not gonna affect Williston's taxes, it's gonna affect the whole district's taxes.
I think, I I think it will, and and, you know, we have some, some demand. I didn't know that temporary classrooms have been placed in Shelburne for fifteen years. I had no idea that they they were there, I would buy it every day for for years. And, you know, I live in South Burlington where we are doing that for the six or an eight million dollar bond for temporary classrooms. Basically to buy the district a couple, you know, five to ten years of breathing room to figure out what it really needs to do. We are talking about modulars, going back to Allenbrook School. Remembering that Allenbrook School is a school that the article I have from nineteen or from two thousand two says. This school was full the day we opened it in nineteen ninety-seven.
And also, we've changed our model, that when it was open, we were having four-year lower houses of grades one through four together. And so we couldn't fit them all there, and so some of them were in Central School and some there. Now we're K through two there exclusively, and it's a whole, whole different. System, yeah.
And pre-K was added at some point.
Yes, so there are some reasons for that, but the connection to new growth and development is not. Right, totally linear.
Right, that housing report, when it looks at the projections over the ten years, it's like a hundred and forty-five-ish. Students more, but the difference between the baseline and then adjusted for growth is only like twenty-five or thirty kids.
Right, we gave the demographer last year a a projection of seven hundred and thirty-nine new dwelling units in the district. Over the ten year period he was looking at. And so he did a business as usual projection, and he did a business as usual, plus Williston staff told me about these seven hundred and thirty-nine units. And he came up with a number of students ten years out that was twenty-four more students. And and he, a lot of that is because he was encountering, he was accounting for the type of development. That we had told him was coming, which was largely multifamily, largely intact corner. So where and how and what is built definitely makes a difference. And and I think there's a nice alignment in Williston between the kind of homes that are needed on that end of the jobs. Challenge that you're looking at. Happen to also be the kind of homes that that don't do a whole lot to your school system. And you can have another whole conversation about whether you should try to manage demand for your school system by managing residential growth. Or what it means to have more neighbors or a bigger school district. But I think the reality Williston is in is one where most of the kinds of homes that we're talking about. In these assessment, just happen to not be the kind of homes that are gonna have a really great big impact on demand for services with the schools. Doesn't mean they won't change, doesn't mean expansions won't be needed. But the connection to the kind of new growth you're anticipating is is a little more tenuous than it looks on first flush.
And the schools also launched their strategic plan, it was in the paper, and I looked through the survey results that formed that plan. And the biggest challenge identified, biggest metric for success is recruiting and retaining high quality teachers. And it's really hard to do when teachers can't move here.
Okay, has her hand up, and then I have.
Well, I, I just, I guess I have a question then. I mean, if if we want to create all these housing units that. People can't stay in, I mean, I guess if you're talking about older people, that's one thing, but if you're talking about people who are sharding out. Then they're not going to be able to stay in Williston, because then they won't be able to afford the bigger house once they have kids and they'll have to move. Is that gonna imbalance things in in a different way, I mean?
Is that a question for Ellie? Case in point. I think it's a really good question, which is. We often see it where communities say, I'd like to plan for a community where people can stay when they, when they age. You know, a community that I can be a senior in. But I think having a goal of a community where people can can stay as they move through different phases of life. It's one, it's one for the commission to think about. You know, I know. My own parents moved from a bigger, more rural house into a smaller, less rural house. About around, you know, within a few years of retiring. Now there's a family again in in the bigger, more rural house that they moved out of. And and there is some opportunity in Williston for some cycling that way too. And actually, I'll, I'll share around that CDSD demographic report, because he talks a little bit about sort of the natural cycling of. You know, people aging in that four bedroom home. And then what are the factors that play into when they go to the two bedroom? Home or the condo, and then a new family typically does come into that larger home. So again, the numbers may not be there if you bring thousands and thousands of two bedroom apartments into Taff Corners. But that change is gonna be really, really incremental. The other thing is you start to look at, and and the schools demographer looked at this. The relative aging of the population, I think we're still the third oldest state in the country demographically. And there's some, you know, the the country is aging, the state is aging, the region is aging. And Williston's aging faster than all of that in terms of our our makeup of our population. And that may, that may affect that as well. I see Jill has her hand up.
I was just gonna see if anyone else had come across that analysis. I don't know if you did it on a blog or a Substack, it's a Middlebury professor who wrote about his own experience of Burlington. And he talks about that point, Kate, of like, I'm a family with two who wouldn't be renting. But, you know, the idea that the house sells, that's four hundred thousand that I can buy, then the five hundred thousand house that that person, it's like, that's the cascade effect of. If we can get more houses across the board in all these. If we can get more houses across the board in all these different tiers. Everybody can move as they need to and age into as they need to, and, you know, as Matt's saying, as people. Get older and downsize, but I thought that was a really interesting analysis he made. And kind of going to the depth of a lot of the different economic components and other pieces.
I didn't see that one, does anybody have it to send around?
Sure.
I'm, I'm going to have to turn into a pumpkin in about eight minutes, and. I just would like to sum a couple of things up from my perspective, which is I really want to do all of the above. And I think we need to find the right balance, we have a lot of work to do to get there, but the materials we're given were really good. And we didn't talk about bonding, but, you know, if we want to get some projects going and we need the funding. And we're not going to take some general fund revenue every year, we could bond. To, to support a project that's really important to the town. And I liked the other things too about allowing three homes on a one-home lot, allowing eighty loose ADUs. What I saw was missing there was anything about short-term rentals, you know, about Airbnb's. I didn't see that in there, in the draft.
So I took a look, V H F A has a really nice tool on that. Whole homes that are listed as Airbnb's or B R B O in, in Williston right now, it's about twenty-five of them. Out of about four thousand five hundred.
Right, so all, all I want to say, as we look at the whole thing, I want to include all those components that could help us have more affordable housing. And I would like to make sure we cover short-term rentals in the same process. So I just think all of those are components, more ADUs, more multi-units on one lot. You know, infill, but all of these are components, and the reason I brought up the. Short-term rentals is that they tend to then soak, soak up some of the increase you get from those features, because people build an extra. Unit on their land, and then they, as something to rent out short-term, and it doesn't add to the housing stock. And so I just want to be careful that we aren't creating a situation where that starts to take up the increases that we, that we create.
Tax on the fund your, your housing, Brian.
Yeah, so I, I just, I, I just feel like we need to move forward on all of these, and we don't have. I don't have the brain space to do much more tonight, but I really think the materials we're given. Go to more depth than we were able to go through in the conversation, and I feel like we should continue to work with them. Well, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, and I, if I can, it's one thing, it would be very helpful for staff to. Sort of make an example, if we're going to have a seventy-five unit new building in, or whatever it would be in Taff Corners area. What would be the difference in cost per unit of making them affordable eighty percent or a hundred percent? I don't like calling things that are a hundred and twenty percent of AMI affordable, I'd like it to be between eighty and one hundred percent. But just to model it, so we have an idea, like, if we were to subsidize it or to ask. Somebody else to subsidize it, how, how much would it be per unit? And if, if Emily can include the link that I gave her for the Cambrian project, there's one example of them negotiating exactly on that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll follow up to everybody with a, an email full of links, some of the stuff we talked about tonight. We covered a lot of ground, and I, you know, I gave you a, a bylaw draft. But mostly just to say we're thinking about this in those terms. I think what would be helpful for me to have folks thinking about is. Do you, do you each think there should be any geographic differences in town in how inclusionary zoning might be applied? What do you think about this sort of fork in the road idea that we've given you where, where growth management stays at least for now? But, but it's sort of set up to encourage most folks to take the inclusionary zoning path. If somebody were to do that, what, what do you see that the, you, you are thinking the town is getting through growth management? That you would want it to still get, even if people chose the inclusionary zoning path? We can kind of talk through some of that, and another example I was thinking about while we're sitting here is. The official map that you all worked on and was adopted as part of Form Base Code is a townwide official map. So we now have a much stronger mechanism to get those paths and trails in the places that the town wants them than we did. As of, you know, September last year, so that, that's another one of those things where before it was, it was a growth management incentive, but now it's really like. We've master planned it for the whole town, and, and, and we're saying this is a, this is a requirement of new development, so. Thinking about that stuff, read through that, think about some of the holes we have in this, I, I know growth management's complicated. The intent is to mostly say you pick one of those two tracks, and there's some things that are either so small or so desirable that they're exempt from both. So thinking about small infill projects, supportive housing, adaptive reuse of commercial space. Stuff like that, just. Likely to naturally be at some affordable level anyway, just because of its scale or the type of thing it is. Are there other things that should be exempt? Are there things we should be careful about being exempt? One thing I got a little concerned about was a commercial conversion might be a hotel to apartment conversion. And it's great when Champlain Housing Trust does it and has onsite management. But we've been approached in the past by out-of-state development companies that wanted to do that with an existing hotel where it gave a really strong. Absentee landlord vibe, and, and it gave us some cause for concern. So. Spend some time with that, we've got a lot of time to think about that stuff, and, and it helps me to think in policy terms, but if you just want to give me notes of. I like it when it's more like this and less like that. We'll keep working on our draft and, and keep the conversation going next time.
Thank you. Really thanks to you and to Melinda and to the C C R P C for coming up. So much information, it's very, very relevant.
Great, well, there's, there's more to do, unfortunately, you guys keep asking for real numbers, which is just what you should be doing, but it's the hardest stuff to do.
So are we, are we ready to adjourn then?
I've got.
Okay, Kate moved it, alright, sounds good. Thank you all, and we'll see you in two weeks, and. Take care.
Ian Campbell joined us in the room halfway through, but.
Hi, Ian.
Bye, Megan.
Bye.